Good to see everybody. This is the biggest crowd we have had in some time. And everybody's smiling, and that's good if you're sitting up here because we've had some crowds this big and you look out and everybody looks like they're ready for a fistfight. So I'm glad we don't see any of that tonight. So it's good to see everybody. We do have a forum. April won't be able to join us tonight, but we do have a forum. So if you would, if you'll bow with me, we'll have a word of prayer before we go any further. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for yet another day of life and the many blessings you've given us, Lord. We're thankful to live in this community. We're thankful to live in a free country. We're thankful for all our friends and neighbors who make this such a great place to live and enjoy life. We ask now if you'll be with us as we make decisions, that they'll be pleasing in your sight and that you'll go with us and forgive us all our sins. Amen. All right. Got a set of minutes there in front of you or should have?
I have a question to the board.
Okay, got a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Second, any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved. Public business comment part of our meeting. If you have something you want to address to us, feel free to do that. Come up to the microphone and tell us your name so that we can get it in the minutes and then we'll be glad to hear what you've got on your mind. Somebody's got to go first before they can go second. There we go.
Hello, everyone. Sarah Goble with Watertown Chamber. So I just want to remind everyone next Friday is Halloween, so it'll be on the square. We're doing, all the shops are doing 5:30 trick-or-treating and then in the gazebo at 6:30 is the Halloween costume contest. And Josh Brown at State Farm has donated $50 cash prize to every category, which was great. And then Brandy at the local collective also has done a $50 gift certificate for the group. So, and then you'll be emceeing it.
I will.
Wonderful. And then I also just wanted to go over some events in December, just in case I'm not here next month. But on Thursday, December the 4th, is the Wassel Walk. It's, we're doing late night shopping on the square and we're also doing the Christmas tree lighting. So nothing has to be closed, not any roads or anything. And then the Christmas parade. I've got good news that Nick Bears from Channel 5 News is going to be our grand marshal. So him and his wife Deb and some of their pups are going to be in the parade, so that's great. And then it will start at 3 o'clock from Roundlick Baptist Church down to Jewels Market as normal. It's on Saturday the 6th, December 6th. And we have...
Starting at 3?
Starting at 3. Starts at 3.
Did you say Halloween on the square, the trick-or-treating will start at 5:30?
5:30.
Good.
Yes, 5:30.
We get inundated with people early.
Yes, so 5:30. I mean, some people might still come a bit early, but that's when we've officially said.
Well, I mean, everybody's welcome. I think it's great.
Yep. But I'll get with the chief about the parade, you know, about closing the route. So that's, that's it.
Got anything you need us to vote on? Nothing?
No, I'm good this time.
Good. Thank you, Sarah.
Do we need any specials with the trains? I mean, we've got two more trains coming tonight. I think we got to Bobo Lynch this week.
Okay, yes, so November 15th.
November 15th.
Yeah, is the Christmas train.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we will have all the wreaths up. April's got it on the calendar for the city to put the wreaths out for them. And then we'll have the gazebo decorated with like wreaths and lights. We won't have the Christmas tree up then because it's a bit early because it's going to be a real tree. And...
So we don't need to close down any of the churches?
No, no, no. Nope, we're good.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Come on up, John.
Hello.
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 Let me introduce myself. My name's Mason Smith. This is my classmate here, Ashton Roach. We are with Cumberland's Nursing Program and we're in the class Community Health. And so we've been doing a little bit of our research. And one of our projects is we have to draw, we had to draw a piece of paper from a cup and you get randomly assigned a place to go and we pulled Watertown. And so after...
Lucky.
Yes, sir. Oh, it's a pretty town. We love it.
Play the lottery.
We've been, yes, sir. We've been doing our little drive-bys, doing what we can, see what we can learn. It's been a great time so far. So basically, what our plan is, from what we've done with our research, is to do a food drive to give back to the community. We're going to get a lot of clean food, cans and stuff, and also educate the community on healthy foods to prevent diseases, things like that, and just give back and find cheaper options that are healthier for people. The main thing that we, we have our plan and our idea set up. Like we said, we want to do our drive and give back. And we got our donations going right now currently at school and at other places right now to get food and be able to provide for everybody. The thing that we've kind of run into is having the location and the pub, having it public. We're looking for November 1st from 9 to 12 and we just need to find a location that's public that will be good for the community to find us and get educated as best...
Okay, so my first thought, and y'all chime in, is Diane Hine is having like a new draw for the Jake's Blessing Box.
Okay.
And it's a huge building and their food and diapers and all that kind of stuff. And it's sometime in November. Like, do you happen to know when you're launching? Okay, I was thinking the 15th. She probably would not care to have it on that day, the jolly too. Or maybe y'all can coordinate with this one.
Okay.
She might say, no, let's move it to the 15th or whatever. But she's putting on social media to try to get the community to come out.
Yes, ma'am.
Advertise that again because it's up all year long and people can come when they need it.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a great thing for our community.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's just an idea.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have a question for the chief on. Is the fire department doing their cook... Why were you on the first?
I was just thinking that we are. What time did you say that was?
From 9 to 12, sir.
Well, we can work with times. It doesn't have to be that specific.
Well, we could, we could make that work. I don't, my thought with it being on the first Saturday and you're doing barbecue on the first Saturday, maybe their location could be in conjunction with you here at Fire Eyes.
Right.
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Because that, that's a public location. We'll get parking over here for anybody that comes. And you're already drawing people in for the barbecue that we have on the first Saturday every month. We're the fire department. That might be some milk and partner.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any leftovers, anything we can protect to the Blessing Box?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, November 1st is your, is your solid date.
Yes, sir. Well, we would never reject the opportunity, but we do have assignments that are due the, what is it, 19th?
Yeah.
The 17th, I think.
The 17th, we have a big paper about the project, so, but of course, we wouldn't turn it down if that was the only option. So the first would work best for us.
Well, we're glad to have you and you just set it up.
Yes, sir.
It works the best for you and all of these folks here will cooperate with you. If you need something, call the office here.
Yes, sir.
And let us know.
Well, appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Is there contact, somebody's email?
You can contact with the line.
The fire chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate you coming up.
Well, now, I have a big question. And I have the assistance. Watertown Park site is not repaired with it. The wood is rotted. I've tried every, looking at it every way and, you know, sawdust and glue. It's beyond repair. So we have to decide what we want to do as far as the sign. And you have some ideas.
I just sent it to everybody, but how, how, I don't have your number. If you'll give me your number, I'll maybe I'll give it to everybody.
Um...
But you can look, you can look.
We're thinking of a new sign for the park. And you mentioned insurance. We might have the insurance.
Yeah, I, I, did it get hit or did it just fall apart?
Oh, it's just worn out.
It's torn out?
I thought it got hit.
Well, they have it one time. It's been there 30 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's completely rotted. The wood, I couldn't even put a screw through it.
Yeah.
You know, so it needs to be replaced. However, we can do that. We can bring it up on the agenda next, the next meeting.
Yeah.
To think about some way to fund the new sign for the park. And it was $1,500 roughly that we found one place, but, or he actually found the one place, but I'm sure if we put it out there, we might find some other places too.
That, that's a 3 by 8 PVC. It'll be painted, he didn't do, that, that's just a small, but 3 by 8, it'll be painted either green or purple or whatever we wanted, wanted to do with that. Again, didn't, I just know him and he does it in his house, so.
If you'll send me your PDF, what you're wanting, for sure, I'll send it to Jacob and get you a quote there. He can probably, he does see and see routing while it's plastered on our sign stuff. You probably routed one out. That still has to last like forever.
So, yeah, so we need to decide what we're going to do with it. I think there's another one over here too that's...
We really ought to replace them all and it might just fall into conjunction with the sign that I want out front.
With that, I think, with that, I think I'm going to sit down. Thank you.
We, once again, had calls this week when people went nowhere come to pay their taxes or whatever and we had to tell them to turn next to the horse sign out here. And that horse sign ain't going to be there forever, so I won't say that. But, yeah, I'm going to make y'all vote on it sometime down the road, but not tonight. Well, we'll put that together and do that. That, that needs to be done and the old one here probably needs to be replaced at the same time. I'll put that on the agenda next time.
Right.
All right. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Chief, I didn't see you come in. You sitting back there.
I'm so small.
You hiding, yeah, you hiding out. You, you hiding out. Come on up, Randy. I thought we were going to have to beg you.
Yeah, I was just waiting. I was just waiting. So another November 1st date. This'll be our...
Third?
Fourth. Fourth Annual Family Fun Day that we've been doing at the park every year. We scheduled it, or not scheduled it yet, but kind of trying to get a tentative date of November 1st. The thing with the food there is it's not going to be till like 4, 4:15. So most of the time, I think the fire department's kind of done serving by that time. Is that about right? Yeah, usually sold out by then. So ours would be 11 to 5 and same thing as every year, inflatables for the kids, rifles, chili cook-off, cornhole tournament. And all that kind of progresses as the day and we always save the chili for the last. So the chili cook-off don't start really till late. So trying to get that again, we'll, same thing as always, we'll do the event insurance and, and send it over to the ladies up front. Seeing if the park bathrooms will be open. Last year they was. I think the year before that they wasn't. So we got some porta-potties brought in, so we'll get with...
Give it two or three days notice.
Okay, yeah, we'll get with Bob and make sure that's still good to go. And then also our Christmas meal on the square. I know it's a little early, but I think last year we just kind of wrapped both into one, you know, so we didn't have to come back to the meeting. But want to do it again the Saturday before Christmas, so that falls on December 20th. Last year, same time, we did it 1 to 4. Got Santa Claus involved, so that was pretty fun. And we kind of teamed up with the police department. I'm not sure what their plan is this year, but we'll be glad to, you know, do whatever we can to, to help out. So just looking for both of them dates and approval to move forward with that.
So you're asking for, for us to okay the family fun day from 11 to 5 on November 1st?
Yep.
And the Christmas meal on December 20th from?
1 to 4.
1 to 4.
Yep, and that'll be at the gazebo, just right there.
Question with the gazebo. I know last year we closed down the outer portions of the square.
Mm-hmm.
Which we probably would need to do that again if you serve the food right there and have some tables.
Mm-hmm. Probably be okay, I'm guessing, after, after 12 o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Most of the businesses, we noticed last year when we started setting up, the businesses were already kind of closing down and people leaving, you know, barber shop.
At 1 o'clock, that's...
Yeah, yeah, 1 o'clock is pretty...
Probably, I just, I wanted to bring that up.
That can be an issue sometimes.
Yeah.
Is, is there a motion to approve?
What part of this, closing the outer part?
Between the gazebo and the bank, those parking spaces.
Yeah, the section of parking spaces right there.
Well, the inner's where everybody drives, but anyway, we, anyways, the...
I'll make a motion to the board.
Got a motion as a second?
I'll say it to that.
Discussion. Everybody understand what we're doing? It's a great thing Randy and his wife too for the community. Appreciate that. And your business, I guess.
Thank y'all.
But we appreciate that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Didn't think it'd be any, all right, nothing, but...
Hey, thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and get into, if there's nobody else, we'll go ahead and get into our agenda and move things along. We've got Dale. I think you're up first tonight.
All right. We have had some more issues with wipes in our system. The pump station at, in the Edna Grooms Avenue was pretty well filled up with wipes and had to be cleaned out. And one of the pumps was, had wipes and impellers and stopped up and I did talk to one of the property owners that owned some rental properties over there and asked him if he could inform his tenants not to flush wipes. It's pretty difficult to know where they come from though, but being a small area that it's coming from just a select few of houses. Other than that, I don't have much for you tonight.
Anybody got any questions with Dale? Okay, thank you, buddy. Appreciate it. Uh, chief, police report. You're up next. Come on up, Tiny. You said you were...
I lose.
Y'all have any questions for me? The stats or anything?
You, buddy?
Is that you stalking me earlier?
Yes. Just make sure you have your seatbelt on, sir.
I was trying to get your raceway.
Not mad.
You, buddy? All right.
Easy.
That's a good one. Anything that doesn't involve spending money, we, I like. Um, but we're going to have to spend some on some other things. There he is, the newlywed.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
We just got back a couple of days ago. I'm still on Ocean Time.
So you look tan or were your marriage going?
Maybe both. We had, last month, we had 46 calls. An increase of 10 from the same month last year. Everything's going pretty well. A gentleman that we went to church with several years ago used to say that it's a poor frog that won't croak for his own pond. So I'm going to brag on some of these guys over here for a minute. For many years, the fire department has had a medical response and we've had people licensed and assisted people medically. And we've always had several to do that. We have three right now that are finishing up their licensure. And that seems to be going well and as long as that does go well next month, as far as I know, will be the first time since established in chart, by charter in 1928 that we've had 100% of our membership have medical license. So I feel like that's a pretty big feat. Some larger departments that can pay and hire people as they will, that might not seem like much, but it is to us. So it's, I'm proud of these guys for that. It's a big accomplishment.
As you should be and we all are. That's very good. You might croak to the lady on the newspaper there. She might get you a little publicity on that.
That's right. So, other than that, I don't have anything for you unless you've got any questions.
I've got one. The drone that we bought for the city operating police department, I should have asked you when you was up there. Didn't. We don't have one person called back to certify to operate the drone.
Uh, no, we have three and I might have got in a little like I, the Baker School, paragons X11. I'm sorry I didn't get it approved for the council to pay. They approved it, they had, but she asked me to bring it back and they wouldn't invoice this, so I apologize for that, but we're reimbursed. We have three that are licensed to fly our drone now.
Okay.
You didn't have the one that's accurate, so they passed Friday, 3rd, they went to 3rd and 10th last week.
I believe that we have one that is licensed to, to fly drones, so that might be something that we can coordinate with him in the event that it's needed and we could have someone else to do that.
You know, I always come back to this house. You and I are the oldest from here, but I, we've come a long way in this department from having a fire drill on Monday night from 7 to 8 where all the guys came out and threw some water out on the road and went back and parked the truck and hoped you didn't have a fire. These guys are trained now. I mean, it was, you know, it was the Mayberry type response. And that's what we had then. I'm not being critical of it, but we've come so far and so far with the police department.
Absolutely.
Who would have thought about having this many vehicles, this many officers, but we knew them. And so, it's good. Moral of that story, it's good.
About how many do y'all have now?
We've got right at 20. We, that's pretty well where we stay. I hadn't counted the numbers lately, but we've pretty well got a full roster, which this day and age, it's hard to keep people when you are paying them. So keeping a full roster of volunteers is, we're lucky for that reason.
That's amazing in itself that there's that many people willing to do it, take their time, spend their money. It's a credit to them and the community.
And I want to add on them and the police, that during the Madelon Yard Sale, the police helped out on the square. The fire department volunteered their time and worked the streets, walking up and down. I think they said they walked seven miles that day. The firemen did, so just thank y'all for being involved as a community and helping out.
Absolutely.
All right, anybody else? Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've got a prepared agenda, but I know at least one person that needs to get out of here and I'm going to call Cody Bly up. Cody, of course, is one of our guys that works on the street, streets and whatever we need done, but he's got a request tonight. The guys want to buy a utility trailer. And tell them about it, Cody, because I'll mess it up if I try to.
It's brand new. It's from BJ's Trailer Service. And the reason we're needing it is getting to the time we're having to cut brush again. Okay, I'm actually putting that in my dump truck right now and it is getting to the point I'm tearing my dump truck up. You know, we're going to tear the hydraulic cylinder off of it, stick in the boom in there. We actually, we borrowed Mr. Dale's trailer before to haul brush. It's a lot more accessible, you know, I can have the guys take it to where I need them, take it, they can unload it. And another point is with this trailer, it's big enough, I can haul our mowers on it. Okay, so it, it's putting more hours on our equipment, having to drive from the city shop all the way to Purple Tiger Drive and back just to mow, you know, 10 to 10 minutes. So instead of me tearing our equipment up, I would rather have something like this, you know, that's brand new. We could sit there at the shop. We're actually going to have it locked down to the dump truck at all times. And like me and Bob was trying to explain to the guys the other day, you know, we, we have a little 4 by 6 trailer, but that's not enough. I mean, we could only haul so much, so like when we have events with the 9/11, the Christmas events and all that, we have to have somewhere to put the wreaths and drive those around town. The chairs, tables, anything that y'all need us to do around town, we can put on there and go with it, so.
What size is this trailer?
It's a, it's a 6 by 4 by 14 utility trailer with a spring lift. And right now, the price on it without tax is $23.50.
We don't pay tax.
Yep. And it comes straight from BJ's Trailer, Mayor Mr. Bob won, would go down there and get it, bring it back, straight to the shop.
And, do, do they offer a warranty on there?
I'm pretty sure BJ's Trailer does, I haven't looked into that, Bob's the one that found it at BJ's, so, I mean, I'll give him the.
Yeah, I, I figured they at least had a year warranty on it, okay.
But, yeah, other than that, that's all I got for you tonight.
I recommend that to you, you got it.
I'll make a motion to.
I'll say it.
A motion second to approve that purchase, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You did good. You're welcome, buddy. Um, Zach, I should've asked earlier, was anybody wanting on TVM?
Okay.
Good. All right, um, Ryan Rich is here with us tonight, I'm gonna jump out of my agen- agenda a little bit, get to the folks that are here, and, um, tell us, what you got, Ryan?
All right, so my name's Ryan Rich, I run the library over here on the square, um, two weeks ago, I met with the county mayor, uh, during the budget committee meeting, uh, to present my proposal for us to buy the land behind the library when it goes up for sale, to plow the land back there. Um, I've been talking with the owner back there about prices and stuff, and he plans to sell it at market value to us, um, that way the city doesn't have to worry about the cost if the county gets involved. Uh, the reason for this is mostly because the library has seen increased patron use, programming, and community engagement, but we can also use it as a parking lot for future events and everything else, because parking is needed on the square. Nearby street parking is limited, and they post challenges for families, elderly patrons, and those with mobility needs, and the growth is coming to Watertown. Every day I have someone that just moved here, come into the library, um, and y'all are prepping the sewer for more homes and everything in the area, so the growth is coming, whether we like it or not. Um, what I presented to the mayor was, the owner is wanting to sell at market value to us. Um, my original proposal, I brought before y'all before, uh, was incorrect with pricing, so I sat down and worked with him. Uh, the property is assessed at one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars, that was using Wilson County's assessment ratio of commercial and industrial at forty percent, so it puts the market value about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the property. Um, I looked around at local demolitions and gravel lot companies to estimate the total cost of the project, I went with the most extreme cases, which is about forty-five thousand dollars for demo and lot leveling, and so the total cost before taxes for the whole project would be five hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. I'm open, any questions y'all got?
Uh, gonna take a deep breath, he's not asking for that tonight.
No.
Didn't you tell us that the county would be two thousand and twenty-seven before?
That's the latest date, yes, um, he may go fall twenty-twenty-six, depending on if he can get enough steel in from the tariffs and stuff, so.
Ryan approached it right away, he went to the county looking for the money, and they gave him a warm reception and were giving him nasty money that night, but after he left, they started to say, don't you think Watertown will pay something like, we'll talk about that.
Would this be in the library's name or the city's name?
It will be in the county's name, um, the plan is for us to buy a portion of it back afterwards, so we can have a little bit of an expansion, but the rest of it will be parking lot and.
Okay, 'cause I'm just, you may want to know this, but I would just be worried about EPA stuff coming from there.
Well, I talked to him, he showed me, he gave me the reports and stuff, they have passed everything for the last six years with Green, they haven't used anything toxic waste since he took over, um, so, there's no hazmat issue or anything in the soil, and he has all that paperwork ready to show, so.
That's, that was a good question.
How does they, your demolition on that, the stuff that's in there, how will they dispose of what's there?
So, it's mostly just a steel pole barn building with walls that they threw up in there.
But they will take everything that's.
They're taking all their equipment and stuff with them, um, I know there were supposed to be three lots they were selling, they own the end of the square, if you're looking at the library, the end on the left, they own that. They wanna keep that for storage because they can't get a storage building built on their new land yet because of the tariffs, so.
Completely zinc dichromate and other chromate structure plating.
Yeah, yeah, so, I went with the most extreme cost of demoing, so, I tried to cover that.
So let, uh, I asked Ryan if he met that Knottville County folks to come tonight, and so she wouldn't hear from somewhere else, and, uh, let him present this here, so he's not asking for anything tonight, but he'll be back to see us in the near future, I think.
I think so, yeah, the county's already asked me some more questions since then, so, yeah, I think they're very interested in helping us out here.
I do have one question, you'll need to go back to, uh, Lowell about this, but when he says market value, you're going off the tax record, we're doing your math, or is he thinking getting an appraisal done? 'Cause market value and the appraisal value with the factors can be two different numbers.
Exactly, yeah, I, off record, he did say he would give us a discount, but, um, I don't know what that is yet until we get it probably appraised, like you said, so.
Okay.
But this was just, like, I, I had something to present to the county, and then, but until a realtor and others get involved, we don't know the exact numbers for sure, but this was the most extreme assessment.
Hopefully, we, we wouldn't need a realtor, so there'd be no commissions to anybody involved, but you might need an appraiser, for sure.
Okay.
Perhaps a survey.
Yeah, a survey, yeah.
I know the county wants to do a survey on the land, so.
Oh, you, you would need a survey.
Yeah.
For sure.
All right, other questions, good questions, round of papers. All right, thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
And if y'all would give this, I could give it to you too.
All right, let's hear, uh, I'm jumping around, but I'll say the stuff I've got to last, uh, which ain't much, but, uh, train museum, you ready to talk?
Sure.
Come on up, Chris.
Uh, kinda just a little update on where we are, I'll try to keep it short here. Since we had our, we talked about it last meeting, we had our kind of kickoff event, so it's publicly announced, the kind of thing, but, uh, the plan is, uh, we're, we've been working on this, I've been something, I've been working on it for about two years, we've got a board now, we're five oh one C three, we've been working for about a year, um, and the whole, the whole, the premise of this is to kind of work in conjunction with the steam engine, with kind of the excursions that are here, and really develop that. The steam engine is gonna change in a dynamic way what the train is all about in our town. An example is, um, when it first comes, they expect what they call chasers to come along, so it's not just the five hundred people getting off of the train, there'll probably be another several hundred to a thousand, fifteen hundred people showing up when the steam engine comes, so it's, it's a big event, it's very important, so, the, what we've been developing, uh, is really working to create communication between Tennessee Central, National Steam, the city, uh, the train museum, uh, the city organizations, to just really prepare for this kind of a thing. Uh, and, and there's a plethora of cross questions that kind of need to be addressed, uh, even along the lines of the, the turntable and the rail yard and those kind of things. Um, so we're really working to facilitate kind of getting that communication going. Um, I've been meeting with Tennessee Central and National Steam for a year or better already, so they're very excited about the whole project. Along with just the facility, uh, two things we're wanting to really work on is, one, is building that relationship, uh, to kind of have that communication. As you're probably all aware, National Steam wants to expand once they get kind of up and running. Uh, the steam engine just, it doesn't turn one and off, I mean, it, it takes ten hours to build up pressure, kind of thing, so when it's on, they wanna use it. So, in the, in the, you know, foreseeable future, we're going to probably be seeing more trains and different types of trains, maybe multiple days of trains and things like that, so, it's something we're kind of talking through with them to really prepare for, uh, and those things will kind of affect the town, just even from the city services kind of thing, from the, uh, you know, police and fire and, and sewer and those kind of things, and then how are we gonna interact with the turntable and turn the train around and all those kind of things, so, we're really working to build those, those relationships, um, and we're kind of trying to be the go-between to get everybody communicating, uh, if you will. And the, the other part of that is just the, the marketing aspect of all of that, um, and the tourism aspect of what that's gonna be. We were sharing with the group the other night, the, um, one example is, without us even doing anything, when the steam engine shows up, because of the numbers they're expecting, we're going to at least double, if not triple, the people we have coming to town. Um, so it's, we're just, by default, we're gonna be building kind of a real tourism base, um, so that's something we're really working towards, um, and that's kind of what the museum is all about as well, how do we take the other three hundred days out of the year and, and turn that into something that we can do to draw people to our town? Um, and the, the railroad is kind of a gift to us, it was important to Watertown back in the day, uh, and it's gonna become important again, and it's gonna have a big impact on what we're doing here, so, um, one of the things that we talked about, uh, at our meeting the other week was, was kind of developing that, and what that looks like, and communicating with the city, um, and, and some of those marketing ideas, moving that forward, um, promoting the train, I'm really working with Nashville Steam, Tennessee Central, to develop kind of a comprehensive message that includes Watertown. Uh, I've spent a lot of time talking with, um, Jason Johnson from, uh, Wilson County Tourism, uh, gonna be meeting with him some more, uh, he's connecting us with some of the state folks, I met with some state folks a week or two ago, uh, so we're kind of moving that up the ladder to really develop Watertown tourism and Watertown marketing, if you will, 'cause I know several meetings ago, Laura, you had mentioned about, you know, there used to be a sign, a billboard, those kind of things, uh, we've been visiting some welcome centers and things like that, and there just, there isn't any Watertown information. You go to Cookville, you go to their information center, there's nothing about us. If you get the state tourism guide, uh, vacation guide that they put out every year, there's no Watertown in it. Uh, so just things like that, that I think we really can move forward, um, and it's a, it's a large task, 'cause there's a lot of people involved. Um, so we have started down that road, we developed a brochure that we've been handing out, starting on the trains in October, to really start with the train people, to talk about Watertown, talk about the history of Watertown, talk about what's coming, um, and as we develop that in through the next year, uh, there'll probably be, you know, things that will interact with mayor's office, from messaging and things like that about Watertown. Uh, Mike and I have spoken several times about the project, and, and Laura's actually on our board, so, um, you know, there's already, we're already working that relationship, Steve and I have talked several times, um, you know, I just want to, part of Mike asking us to, you know, share at some of these council meetings is to really, um, kind of bring that loop together, I think, uh, and, and we have a Tennessee Central and a Nashville Steam person on our board as well, so we're working very closely with them. Uh, so, again, I think it's what I hope to do in the, in the coming months, you know, if you ever have questions, um, through Laura or from me, just reach out, so that you know if there's things that we need, we're, we're a five oh one C three nonprofit private organization, so we're, we're working on the facility down those roads, but there will definitely be city interaction, um, you know, on the, on some of the infrastructure side and safety side, and what does that mean, we have, you know, fifteen or two thousand people showing up every weekend instead of five hundred, uh, and those kind of things, so, uh, I just kind of wanted to share where we're at, what it's looking like, kind of things we're thinking through, we've already started that communication, um, and, and wanna keep it going, but if you have any questions at any time about what the facility is, what we're doing, what that's gonna look like, um, I think it's, as we've gone along and shown it to people, we've got a, kind of a video that's, some of you have seen, that shows the rail yard all the way up, you know, through the, through the red building over here, which would be the museum, uh, it, it's, it's very significant, and it's super exciting, just to see it all complete. We met with a couple other museums, and they were jealous, if you will. Uh, we have, you know, you know, we have a turntable and a siding and excursion train and, you know, outdoor storage space for old, you know, old train cars and locomotives and a, and a museum coming, and we kind of have all of the pieces that most museums only have one or two or three of, so, they're super excited for the potential we have here, and I think Tennessee Central, National Steam are as well, and this is a real great way for us to get a seat at that table and communicate with them, to make sure that Watertown is maximizing the things that they're doing, kind of for our benefit.
We're going to, from the meeting that we had ten days or so ago, we're going to have a spot on the agenda for them each month, update us somewhere where they are, what we can do for them, what they can do for us, or whatever, just to keep the local communication going, a lot of outside as well, and I'm just sitting here thinking, the other thing, the, uh, steam engine fall open house is November first.
November first.
When everything else is gone.
Yeah, yeah, and exciting, we're, uh, Watertown Rail Museum, we're gonna have a booth there, and we're to the point now where we're participating with them, um, so, you know, while they, and they have a lot of people come through, you know, to, to view the steam engine, we'll be able to be there and start showing people, and, uh, at the yard sale, I'd set up a booth over by the hardware store, and it was, it was a lot of fun, had a, had a great time talking to a lot of people who came by, able to show them the plans, talk about the steam engine and the rail yard and the turntable, and it really kind of made it real for everybody and kind of to see it all come together, so, uh, but, but at any time, if y'all, you know, please feel free to reach out, any questions or thoughts, or, uh, this is a, this is a long process, I mean, this is a, this is a two to four year deal, just to get down the road, and, and the steam engine is probably gonna come online, all continue as well in the next twelve to eighteen months, so, we're not far away from, from big changes coming.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
We'll call you every month, or somebody.
Right, well, I don't know if I'll have something every time, yeah, I appreciate it, thank you, thanks.
And let me just, I usually update y'all on things we got going, let me jump on just to deal with a turntable, and then I'll come back, we've got some other folks here that want to speak to us, but the, uh, we continue to have our monthly meetings with the, on the Chrissy Grant with the Federal Railway Administration, was shocked that they had not shut down, they actually held their meeting last Thursday, and we'll have another one December the eighteenth, but we, at the same time that was going on, the National Eastern Railroad Authority, which I chair, was meeting, and we entered into an agreement with the authority and the city of Watertown, it's an operating agreement for, uh, the rail yard, so, uh, it's more of a agreement in principle than it is to really find ten, but this is something the, uh, federal government had to have before we could go any further, so we got it, and that's, uh, that's done, so I'll continue to keep telling you on that side, and Chris or somebody else will update you on all the good things that are going on. Jeff Tonks is here, wants to talk to us about several things with our parks and recreation program, so, I'll have Jeff coming up, and then, uh, we will have gone a long way through our, uh, agenda.
So, um, I think the first thing on my list here, I thought I would take advantage of being up here to update you on everything else that we're doing, just so you have an idea of what's going on with sports in, in Watertown, but, mayor put on the agenda tonight for ball field lights for the Little Field, um, we, we did a, a really rough estimate, but I, I'm thinking we're pretty good, that really the, the only expenses that, that we'll have is, is the, the wire and, uh, the lights. I've got boxes, uh, Middle Tennessee Electric has agreed to hang the lights for us, so, realistically, it's just a matter of paying for the, the pieces that, that, that go. Um, we, we talked about just allocating twenty-five hundred dollars to do that, um, the wires, about nine hundred dollars, and the lights are about nine hundred dollars. Shannon Speck said he had hung some at a ball field and said two of those lights would light up that whole park over there, I, I figured for three, um, just so we, if we need to redirect one towards the bridge, we can redirect, 'cause there, there are four in a bank, um, is what I've, I've looked at, so, twenty-five hundred dollars oughta get us, if we can get the city to dig the ditch, um, we should be, we should be fine. It's about four hundred and sixty feet, give or take, from. It's about 460 feet, give or take, from the pole to there. And we'll be using the electric, we'll put a box off of the electric on the helipad, so we don't have to have a new service or do anything like that. We'll just tag in onto their, to their box and run it.
Okay. Take those one at a time, and I'm recommending it, by the way, but the, how we'll pay for it, we, we, y'all know, the folks out here may not know, we run our Parks and Recreation Department off of user fees, not really user fees, sponsorship, donations, and concession sales. And we have enough money that we do that every year, and we make it. But it doesn't allow us to put aside any money. And we've never put any tax dollars over there. It's always, you know, we tell you to eat as many hamburgers as you can. If you don't like hamburgers, we sell ice cream. But spend your money there, and it helps to, and, and the good folks that run their businesses here, do a wonderful job supporting our program and our kids. Now, gotten on my soapbox again a little bit, and I'm prone to do that, and I apologize, but we set aside $75,000 of ARP money, wanted to use that, or still want to use it as possibly seed money for matching grants, but I don't mind recommending that we take $2,500 of that and do this project. Natalie, the $72,000, $1,500, I'll recommend that to you.
And that's the field.
The Little Field.
Little Field.
Have you looked to see how much it would be to just put new bulbs? If we're going to have Middle Tennessee Electric out here anyway, can we redo the bulbs on the Big Field here?
It's a beast all unto itself. Now, Steve and I have talked several times about doing that. I've been told, I think Steve also, that, that if we can use the wiring that's there, it's very possible that that can be done, but we're still probably looking, I would say, 10,000 just in lighting per field. And I don't want to say Middle Tennessee Electric will do anything other than what they, they've said. So, you know, that would be another thing to do, but, but it, it's possible to do that with the, as long as the wiring is good up there. Those, changing the bulbs, I don't think is the, is probably, I know I've been told you can put LEDs, is that what you found?
You can, you can either put LEDs in there, or there's a conversion that can happen.
But you have to change the, the conversion, because I think those are three-phase.
Right.
Lights that are up there, I think we have to change the, so if we just could use the wiring, the wiring is more than adequate, as long as it's in good enough shape, we can just change the, just rewire the, the new lights.
That may be something we talked to Speck about.
Yes.
I was going to say, I would.
It was a pretty simple process to swap both from the big light and the base systems down to LED.
Except you're at 60 feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm referring to more than anything, is the height.
That was my thing, is if Middle Tennessee Electric's going to be here already to do those, if we could utilize them the same day instead of bringing out someone else, bring them out another day, could they inspect, could they at least start the process? I don't know what this process is, but it needs to be done in the next year or two. That lighting's pretty bad.
Well, we also need to keep in mind, mayor, I know you mentioned the, the seed money on some grants, that 75, 70, 75,000, whatever's left in there, I think we have to spend it by the end of next calendar year.
We do.
And the big grants that I've been looking into about expanding the park on the backside of the creek, at the state level, you are allowed to use, if you already own the land, the land value can be part of your matching funds. Which that is a great benefit to us, because we've got close to 20 acres back there. And with, with the value of land going up, I mean, that would give us a good matching fund.
Two million dollars.
Yeah. So.
So you're saying, let's take a look at this money and spend it off some other time?
That was going to be my recommendation, because I've also been, I've also been looking at restroom updates. And you can't do a whole lot with the restrooms at only 70, 75,000. They just, you, you would be surprised what a new restroom, ADA compliant, is going to run you $150,000 to $200,000, if you don't, totally new. But, you know, and then remodeling, still, you got the issue of, I mean, it adds, restroom data quickly, they're expensive, so I think we'd, we'd be better served to go ahead and look at trying to use that money to maybe do the lights on. And I know the, the horse arena, they've complained about the lights, too. I don't know if we'd have enough to, but, I mean, we need to look at the lighting on the whole facility. Not only that, updating the lighting to LEDs should reduce our power bill.
When they're used, yeah.
When they're, when they're in use, I mean, I mean, they'll use less power.
You know, one of the things I found in government, and I don't doubt y'all worried of it, but everything always gets sold, but it'll save money. I just discussed with them yesterday, who hadn't been sure three years ago, they conventionally would need to change the telephone system, all of this stuff, and how much money it's going to save you. And now that you've got three systems, you'll pay them more than you've ever paid in your life. I don't know where the savings are. But I agree.
Inflation.
Yeah. But, the, I agree, the LED lights, just like putting them in your home, it shouldn't save you money, but usually when somebody's got something to sell, they find something else to get their extra money to save them.
The DBA has had some energy incentive programs to pass, there may be something through the DBA, they have some pretty big incentive programs in the past. You might want to contact the DBA. Actually had the DBA come out and do an energy assessment at one of my facilities in the past, and go through, hey, where did we save money on different items, and how much money they would give you on different items. You might get somebody from the DBA to actually come out, take a look at stuff.
So, all right. Thank you.
So we need a motion for the 2400.
We do. Because he's got something else coming behind him.
I make a motion that we approve for the lights on the Little Field, three lights.
Yeah, I think three will be, will be plenty. And if I didn't do it, it's a 2400.
Not to exceed 2500.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and second discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Here's unanimously, we'll move to the gym.
The gyms?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Of course, I have this list, and I lift that off my.
Oh, well, go into your.
No, 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 I might, I'm just putting.
I've just got two of them on here on the gym, so we may not be able to take them up tonight.
No, no, these are just comments.
Oh, okay, all right.
The gym, they, they're redoing the gym floor in the big gym at the high school, or at the middle school. And it's going to cost about five grand, they've asked us to pay something. I suggested to the mayor a thousand dollars for it. I was trying to help them with the old gym, but it, it was supposed to happen during fall break, but it didn't. But, but they are doing the big gym, and I've asked if, if we could give a thousand dollars for that, so.
We use it, our teams play up there, they don't charge us anything, they pay the light bill, seems like a very fair trade, so certainly recommend putting a thousand dollars in.
I make a motion, and a thousand.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Somebody's breathing. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That passes, all right, Jeff.
Okay. This is just a list of things, and I, I wrote them down as they came to, junior high baseball. They're, they're still using this, I think everybody knows the, the park, and they have volunteered their, volunteered to do work at the park, and they want to do it within the next couple of weeks. So if you wanted to have suggestions, or y'all want to say, make suggestions, my biggest thing was clearing the tree line, the water line, the tree line, trying to clean that out. I imagine that would take all day, depending, you know, there's probably 20 of them and their parents, but I say parents, I don't know if parents are coming, I just know the kids are coming, but I'm assuming that there'll be some parents come help them. But the tree line was the one thing I knew, that they want to paint the dugouts, they want to repaint the dugouts. I told them I'd help with the paint for that, but, but they do want to paint, and so if there's anything y'all can think of that you'd rather have them do, I'm, I just threw out suggestions, I, I.
Those sound good to me.
Just, I mean, it's an upkeep, you know, anything that they're willing to do, and they're, they're doing it as community service. Just, just so you know, so I'll, I'll relay that to him. Basketball, we have taken on Southside this year for our basketball program, Southside Elementary. They have not had a basketball program in four years. WWBA would not allow them to play there, this is too far, I get it, and the Blue League is strictly for feeder schools to Lebanon, so they're, fell under the same thing that Tuckers did, they, they didn't have, not had a ball program. So we took Tuckers on last year, and this year, Southside has, has requested that we try to, try to get them involved. I'm trying to set this up, so they can have their own, they have more kids in elementary school than we do. So it won't happen this year, but next year, they probably have enough of their own league, and they can do their own thing. Their biggest problem is, I think they got rid of one of their gyms and turned it into an auditorium, so they only have one gym. I've asked Larry Tomlinson to see if he could find a church that would be willing to let them use a gym in Lebanon to practice, so that they don't have to come here. We have, we probably have enough time in our gyms times that we could fit them in. Right now, the numbers are 105 at Southside, 63 for Tuckers, and 204, or 206 for Watertown. We'll be at probably 250, that's where we've been for the last, last three or four years at 250. But, again, Southside will have their, their own before the end, but their biggest problem is gym time, because of that one gym, because their junior high girls and boys both have to use it, so it puts it at 7:30 before, before we can get their gym. That doesn't, because we've tried to cut our practices at eight here, so we might fit one in there at 7:30 four days a week, but, or really, we practice two on a, an hour or so, we could get eight, eight teams, and I think right now, they're, they're at eight or nine, so we'll just see how, how it folds out here in the next couple of days.
When's your season going to start?
Season should start the first Saturday in December. That's the boss back there.
The boss?
That's the boss, yeah.
December, first Saturday, December 6th? Parade Day and SEC Championship? Boy, there's a lot going on here.
That brings me to the, to the next thing, is our football. Our football won all of their playoff games Sat, this past Saturday, and so we're playing again this Saturday. We had draft times scheduled for right in the middle of, of all this. There, there hasn't been, because of fall break and all the other things, and because of football, it's, it's really hard, and that's what we had talked about, the coordination of all four of our schedules, baseball, basketball, soccer, and football, all trying, because we draw so much from the same kids. So it, I, I have to work around all that. And the fact that we're in the playoffs is a good thing, but it kind of messed our schedule, and we, we have to have the numbers to see exactly what and when and how we, we can do it all. So I always try to get everybody to sign up, but we will still have 50 kids between now and next week added to what we have. But having said that, we moved our, our, our draft date a couple hours later, so we can accommodate, hopefully we can accommodate, now there's a bunch that have flag and seniors, so they may wind up staying and not come back, but they'll all get on a team, we'll draft them on a team, no matter whether they're there or not. As long as they're signed up, everybody gets assigned a team.
Are the football games here?
No, no.
Are there Westmore?
Westmore, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's kind of where the, the football and the, the basketball. I, I didn't know about the, the credit cards, if I, if need.
Yeah, I forgot that.
It's okay, I, I just, but.
Remind me, if, if quick you will, get the grease.
Loews, I would like just to mention Loews, they've donated paint, they've donated a lot of stuff for us, they do, anytime I ask, they're, they bend over backwards. Just so you know, Loews does a lot for our community, things that, that you won't see most of the time, but, but they do a lot for us. Park sign, Bill Moss, we need to do that.
Yeah, he's calling for me today, and I need to call him back.
Yeah. David Johnson, by the way, is the junior high baseball, if any of y'all know him. He also is a public relations, runs a public relations office or something, so just thought maybe somewhere down the line, we might put him to work at something else, but, but he's not a teacher, he just volunteers for the junior high. Unless y'all got questions for me, that's where we are. If we make it, whatever teams we get, we get through this, we'll play next, November 1st at Gorms, we'll play the championship, so they'll be playing, playing up there.
November 1st. It'll be a day and a half for me.
I still need sponsors, and I still need coaches for basketball, so anybody wanting to coach, just come on down.
Got a little long in the tooth for that, yeah.
That's all I got.
Wilson, thank you. Appreciate everything you're doing, and Haley and the whole family, everybody, so. Take, take a really.
Speaking of that, the banquet for football will be November 8th, 8 o'clock, or, November 8th, 3 o'clock, Middle School, teen nights. It's not a high time.
Haven't heard that sound before.
There's a drum.
Okay. The, all right, let me go through two or three things I had left, and then we'll move on to what the council wants to talk about. The, we're a quarter of the way through the year, obviously a few days past the quarter, but Steve Casey, Laura Cromer, Cromer and I met last night, and went through our budget first 90 days, we don't see anything, it's really alarming. We have one or two things that are probably out of whack a little bit. Time may heal them, or we may have to make some adjustments somewhere. The next big marking point will be halfway through the year to see where we are. The one thing I do want to say, because we've got some merchants here, our local sales tax is exceeding what we budgeted, and that's good. It's good for us, but it's good for them as well, because they make the sales. And right now, it is about, let me sit down and do this math in my head real quick, 8% to 10% ahead of what, of what we budgeted. So hopefully that'll, that'll hold up well. And this one, and we don't know the answer to it, maybe some of y'all do, but our beer tax is doing really, really good. We're almost 50% at 25% of the year, so whatever y'all are doing it, keep on doing. I shouldn't have said that properly. I'll, I'll get forgiveness, I hope. But everything else there is holding up pretty well. We do have a payment due November 1st on our big sewer bill. We have the money, we'll be wiring that October 30th. And the large increase we had to do, that still regretfully had to be done, is doing what it's supposed to do, it's covering the debt, so. You questions for me on that? Okay, the, on the current projects, I've already mentioned the turntable, let me mention two you, sewer project's ongoing, hopefully we're beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel. And on the water projects, got an update today, the tank painting project is underway, and sandblasting of the interior has started. The system is operable now, with temporary storage, and we should be back in service in our tank in 45 days, approximately 45 days. The contractor is ordering materials and expected to begin the piping work in November, and the flow meters with RIA Engineering is ongoing as well. So we got a lot going on right now. Water and sewer is not something you really see unless you turn on the water tap or flush the commode, it doesn't work. But everything seems to be going well, and a little bit, just pray we don't have a fire, let me say it that way. We'll have the water to deal with, but it will put us in a strangle. And the only other thing is, we need to elect a member to the JCDB, it's referred to as position number of. to the J C D B. It's referred to as position number eleven, it belongs to a council member from the City of Watertown. So, and I think that is the council's, council elect set, I think Steve Casey is on there now, and his term will expire, uh, his current term will expire January one to twenty-sixth. So they're asking us to either reelect him or elect somebody for that seat so that it's continuity.
I would like to make a motion to reelect Mr. Casey.
I'll say it.
It's breakfast four times a year.
Neat.
No, I, I don't, I don't have a problem. This, uh, there's some good information that's always provided at that meeting, and, uh, fortunately, my full-time employer is flexible enough to allow me to take an hour and a half, two hours, once a quarter to go attend.
You did a good job representing.
Good. All right, got a motion and second to elect Steve. Better vote before you get the chance to back out. All in favor, say aye. Okay. That is all I have, other than to say, we will meet again in November, on November the eighteenth, believe it or not, not November the first. Uh, we'll meet on November the eighteenth, third Tuesday, that will be right, uh, about seven, eight days before Thanksgiving. And so, uh, the holiday season should be in good, uh, good swing by then. And I will reiterate, I'll put it in my article this time, it'll come out the next day or two, please support our local merchants. Um, it's good for them, it's good for us, and they do a lot for our recreational programs. So, uh, please support them. And have fun on Halloween. They do a lot, Halloween, Halloween on the square. It's fun, kids enjoy it, and it's enjoyable as an adult to watch the kids have fun. So, uh, that's all I have. Hal?
Uh, the, uh, yard sale went good. You and I talked.
Yep.
And, uh, we had some huge problems. Cars wouldn't go, being stubborn, wouldn't go both ways. And, uh, and we had some people, two or three, that sat up on the sidewalk. You couldn't walk down sidewalk, get out of the street. And I think I talked to you about one of them. And, um, so, but it was, but it was pretty good. I was, I saw.
I probably watched it.
We, we talked about it down the square, and it was, it was pretty good.
Those are th- those are things that are fixable.
Yeah.
You know, um, so.
And I don't think we had any problems, we're totally with the beer. I didn't see a whole lot of people over there.
We, we didn't have problems per se, but we've got still some that were leaving the premises to go out into the public. And we have an ordinance, uh, matter of fact, I made a copy of it to discuss tonight.
That wasn't from the beer garden, though?
I know.
That the chamber put on.
I know.
And, and that was one of the things that I was gonna talk about, too.
But open containers of beer, beer or alcoholic beverages are prohibited on, uh, uh, public streets, public property, and on private parking lots, so.
And, yeah, I'll watch my.
As part of mine, I would like to break the ban, and, uh, please start giving tickets. Anybody comes out with open beer, I think that'd stop it.
Yeah, I don't think anybody had any problem with it being sold, and the beer garden, I thought went very well.
But, uh...
But when they, but.
I think that would stop that, if we just, if police see somebody with a open container of beer out on the street.
But not just beer, I mean, it's any alcohol.
Alcohol, wine, or whatever it tastes in there drinking.
And I would say.
Just write a ticket right there. I think, if, if we had to make a, uh, motion, get it done, or whatever we need to do, that's what.
The law's on the books, it'll be up to them, and, you know, they use their discretion, you know. The guy walks out the front door, and you stop him and say, get back in there, and he goes, I'm not gonna write this to him. He says, well, I'm gonna bring my.
If you can stop it, then that's good. If you can't, either way, just write a ticket.
I'm gonna go ahead and mention that this past Saturday, the, the wine, the Delmonico was set up behind the red building, and, not this past Saturday, sorry, I guess two Saturdays ago. And, um, in, on the square, in the business that I work at, we caught five or six people with their wine coolers, slushies, just walking around. And I, we purposely said, where did you get that from? Oh, Delmonico! And so when we approached them, the yard sale day, 'cause they were mad, 'cause their people couldn't walk through our beer garden, but we were following the rules that we were set before the beer board. They were mad, 'cause their people couldn't walk through there. And they said, we always had, and they said they had their own security, and that they made sure nobody was out on the street. Then fast forward to the week next week, there was people out on the street. So I'm with you, Mayor, if they're out on the street, if we can't do it for our own citizens, which we shouldn't, I'm not saying that, then we can't do it for these wine train people. So, okay, I'm off my seat, bye.
Anything else, Hal?
No.
Steve?
Hal, I have, well, I have one question, but Cody's left. Have we made any progress on the old city hall?
We have, and we'll, we'll talk about that. I know I keep saying that.
With the cooler weather, I don't know if we.
Yeah, it's tight to get in there now.
Okay. But that was it.
Laura?
So, the wine train, I just mentioned that. The other thing is, I know that Cody and Bob had mentioned that moving the bleachers every time we had an event was, you know, uh, starting to hurt them. So I looked, and we can get three-row bleachers for about five thousand dollars. And they're the storable kind, so they will fold down and, and we can put up. It is great on train days to have somewhere for these people to sit, even if we don't have huge entertainment. It's just a courtesy for our town to help provide that. And as, um, as Chris said earlier, we're only gonna grow with that. So I would like, at some point, not tonight, but let's just start thinking, if you find a better deal, or y'all find better, um, thing, I, I think we should kinda go in maybe with the, with the chamber and split a few sets of bleachers. Um, and I don't even know if the chamber would be willing to do that, but I'm thinking we, we're needing something like that.
If you don't mind, explore that with the chamber, and not just put on the agenda bacteria for the event.
Okay.
We could add wheels.
Yeah, some of these had wheels.
But I'm saying, we could add wheels, these, and then it hits on the front, where we could create this stuff, like a wheel. It, it can be built, and they, and they, I think they have wheel kits for, just like they have for container trucks, trailers, that make a kit that you can put on, and they'll just come off and move the next.
Okay, that's something to, I'll look at that, too. My only thought, too, is putting these big bleachers up. Some of our businesses weren't happy with putting them up at the time that the city could. Let's say the city can't get out, has to do it eleven o'clock. Well, that's taking up five or six parking spots all day Friday, when we really don't need them till Saturday. So that was my other thinking about having the portable kind, is we can leave it open until the Saturday event. But I'll look at that, too. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Kay, Kayla? Oh, your hat, is that New York Yankees hat?
Natural soccer.
Natural soccer.
I just like them in Nebraska.
Good-looking hat.
It is.
Keep getting wine out of there.
Mike Myers got a gun.
Oh, okay.
Mister Hal.
Put that in the yard sale.
That was a good one.
It's gonna be a rough year for me. You've already got me, I'm afraid he's gonna get me. All right. Um, Zach, we got anybody over there that wants to talk?
We're all good.
We're all good? All right. Well, we got one more motion, we're ready for them.
I voted for McGurk.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Everybody rise and go home if you're.
Wheels and hitch kits.